Do I hear a motion on that agenda?
Second.
Section, Walden David.
I oppose.
Harry. For a presentation.
Tonight we actually have a series of five presentations, all short presentations. I made the administrators promise that. And they all address the budget in one form or another. There are questions that have come up at some point regarding things that were on the reductions list or things that have been asked by the board about, well, what do certain people do? And so, the first one this evening is Mr. Marco Landervan, who is going to talk about what the cuts to the athletic program would entail. And then he's also going to follow up on a previous presentation that was made about community use of the fitness room.
Let me keep it under 20 minutes. Good evening, Jeff. I'm Mel said I'm here to represent, in fact, the proposed cuts on interspersed athletic program and also the community use of our high school fitness center. Our athletic department reductions philosophy is to reduce costs while maintaining opportunities for students of grades seven through twelve, an opportunity to discontinue interspersed athletic program. Here's a list of previous cost-saving measures that the district has taken. The first one is the state contest, New York State Athletic Association. Two years ago, they reduced the maximum number of contests for varsity teams. That was a statewide reduction, and it was a nice cost-saving for the district. We then followed up with reducing the number of competitions for our clubs, for our club teams, encouraging them to be consistent with the other varsity teams. We eliminated non-league games at the modified JV levels. They play a league-only schedule, the minimum. We limit varsity teams to only two scrimmages. We eliminate modified scrimmages. We cut all non-league contests played out of the area. So we've got basketball teams competing in tournaments upstate, and we have teams travel out of the tri-county area for invitationals. We keep those programs vocal. We reduce spending on supplies and equipment. We've been reducing that line for the past three years. And we've reduced the number of event staff at some of our home athletic contests. This kind of outline of our athletic budget, contractual loans, coaching salaries, event staff, that's the chaperones, game officials, the dues we pay on the state section and D level, non-contractual, that's the area we concentrate on making our reductions, supplies and equipment, entry fees, that line in the budget is for tournaments, invitationals, when teams compete in the state championships, coaching players. Reconditioning, that's the line that we use to recondition all of our football helmets, baseball helmets, any phys ed equipment or, I'm sorry, athletic equipment that breaks, such as scoreboards, we use that to fix those. Transportation, we have a contract with A&amp;A, but we control the number of trips that we send out. Here are proposed reductions for 2012, 2013, reducing the athletic budget by $25,000. The majority of that will come from transportation. We were trying to be creative. Last year, I had a meeting with all our varsity coaches, and some of these ideas came up. Eliminate buses for contests, bordering districts. For example, our baseball team said they're going to scrimmage Ketchum over the spring break. Instead of having a team bus leave Spackville High School, go to Ketchum for the game and then transport back, the parents would transport their child to the game and bring them back. Anytime we do that, it's a cost savings of anywhere from $300 to $400. Small teams, golf, tennis, cross-country, if you have a couple of kids qualified for the state tournament, no sense sending a large school bus transporting them to that contest. We encourage coaches to become occasional drivers in the district, and then they can transport the athlete with a school van. We share buses as much as possible with other schools. If Ryback has a couple of track athletes going to the state tournament, we do, we share a bus with them, and we split the cost. And as always, our Spackville teams try to share busing as much as possible. You know, if we have a golf team going up to Hyde Park and a tennis team going up to Red Oak on the same day, we'll put the two teams on the same bus to share the cost. Equipment supplies, at this point, we're ordering items only necessary to keep programs operational and safe. Entry fees, it's minimal savings. You know, we reduce offerings for coaching players, professional development for coaches. 2013, 2015, at this point, if we're asked to reduce more, $25,000 or more, we're really at the point now where we're going to have to touch programs. We've made cuts the last three years. We've reduced the athletic budget over $60,000 the past three years. If we reduce more, we're looking at a possibility of eliminating a level. The savings are up there, JV will be $78,000, modified programs, eliminating all modified will be $95,000. We're not alone. Many of our neighboring districts are in the same boat. The feeling I get from my athletic director meetings is that most schools will maintain all three levels next year, modified JV and varsity. We're hoping to do the show as well. And then 2013, 2014, it's going to be difficult for districts, and, you know, it might be a league move to eliminate one level and then combine the other two for scheduling purposes. In this scenario, the league on the bottom would offer varsity modified B schedules. Varsity would consist of primarily ages, grades 10, 12, modified Bs, grades seven through nine. So an opportunity would exist for students, grades seven through twelve. That's one option. If the majority of the schools in 2013 are not going to eliminate a level, they're going to maintain all three, and we decide to make cuts and possibly eliminate a JV or modified level, my suggestion would be to form a committee next year of community members and coaches and look at the pros and cons of each, and really decide what would serve our district and our community best, eliminating modified or JV, make a better decision at that point. Questions?
Just a question. Exactly, the rules of JV currently, the league didn't choose to instill that in modified B, like you said, with the policy committee. And is there a way to define it just ourselves? And call it JV, and it can be a modified JV, and maybe got two JV, meaning so that it's going to be the same, or be some?
So if the league, if the league were, yeah, if we're going to keep modified JV varsity prior, what are our options?
And if we decide, if we want to, and you're talking about whether we're eliminating JV or modified, what's best for the community? Like, let's say we come up, can we make a high grade where JV is just a bigger group? Or what can, like, a eighth grader not play on JV?
That's correct. Yeah, middle school student, the definition of the State Athletic Association is a middle school student to play on a JV or varsity would have to be an exceptional athlete and be tested maturity exam and fitness test in order for them to compete at that level. We could do the varsity and modified B programs, and modified B could play, the state says modified B, if you have to modify to seven through nine, can't play against other modified schools, grades seven, eight. All right, the league would have to approve that, and I think, you know, schools are going to be in tough shape, so I think the league would approve that. So that could be an option.
So the whole thing is going to be somewhat dependent on what everybody else is doing?
That's right. Everybody, we have monthly meetings, and we discuss this, athletic directors, and we kind of get the state of the district address anytime we have our meetings. Every, the majority of the schools seem right now to, they're going to maintain all three levels next year. Maybe one or two will lose, eliminate either JV or modified programs. And then 2013, 14, you know, if things keep going the way they are, I think it's going to be, I think at that point, the schools are going to look real hard at a level. And then we would want to, obviously, be consistent with the league if the majority of the schools make that move. If they don't make that move, and we still want to make cuts in our athletic programs, then I think it would be good for the community or our committee to decide what would best suit our district.
Why would we modify, we can work, modify the JV?
Yeah, I know, I know there's people in our community and coaches that have a strong belief that eliminating the modified, we might serve our district because we have the CYO programs, we have the Katapicipsi programs that many of our six, seventh, and eighth graders were involved in. You know, you could, another option is increase our entry rolls after school. That's a minimal cost, where we could add some programs.
But why was it 75 versus 45?
Oh, there's more coaches, more kids involved, yeah.
And one other thing, I probably haven't had a chance, but should we be looking at liability issues if we're going to have parents transporting? Assuming if they transport their own child, that's one thing, but you know they're going to start cock-rolling, and then is there an issue with transporting to a school van?
Yeah, we have a transportation waiver that parents sign, so they would fill that out to transport their own child. If they're going to transport another child, then both parents would need to sign that, sign off on it. So they would give permission for them to go with another family.
As far as, President, if we already have to eliminate a program in some loop down the road, I know we do have some booster programs. How does that work as far as a committee wants to get together for a sports booster in order to save a modified football or modified whatever it may be? And they do provide some financial assistance to the school. How does that work as far as the equipment? Is that, can they use that equipment that's still, that's already there, or do they have to purchase their own?
Yeah, they would be able to. The state law is you can't pay to play. So you can't, you can't play, say, if we're having a football program, your parents can't pay $200 a student athlete to keep that program up and running. But say we cut modified, it's the same as $95,000 for the district. If a booster club got together, raised $95,000, donated it to the district, the district could accept that donation and keep that program going.
Would it only be for certain, or would have to be for the entire program?
It would have to be for the entire program.
Marco, one question about the occasional drivers. Do they have to take special training, or just the regular driver's license and that's it?
There's a physical that they need to take, the same physical that our bus drivers take, and they're board-approved as occasional drivers.
Proposed community use of the high school fitness center. First, back in January, I presented some options for getting the community into our high school fitness center. At that board meeting, the board asked that I look into the cost of the programs, and there was two options. There was a group training session that would be offered for community members, and then the other option would be having open community hours to use the fitness center. We talked about a hybrid of both, and I'll present what that would look like. Again, the group fitness training sessions, 10-week program, offered two days a week for a total of 20 classes. There would be 10 to 15 participants. The community members that want to participate in that would pay for the trainers at $200, and there would be no cost to the district. Open community hours, that would be two days a week throughout the year, summers at school year, one weekend night and one day on the weekend, three hours, three hours per day. The cost for that, there would be, a facility supervisor would be necessary to control the rooms. When people came in, they'd have to sign in, verify that they live in the community, and that supervisor would oversee the facility and ensure that it's being used properly and safely. Approximately $25 an hour for that person for a total of $7,800. We got the $25 per hour by taking, we have a fitness center advisor that works in the summer, they're paid stipend contractually, and that comes out to about $25 an hour. They open up the weight room nine to 10 hours a week for 10 weeks for our students. An additional inspection service, I would recommend, right now, we do an annual inspection on our equipment in the fitness center, and that's scheduled for this summer. They lubricate, they fix all the machines, they do a safety check, and they clean the machines. Right now, that's once a year. If we're going to open it up for this much use, I would recommend that we do it also during winter break, because it would be quite a bit more wear and tear on the equipment. This would be a total annual cost of approximately $8,500. That's kind of the hybrid of the two, so you have the group training sessions, you have the open community hours. I know at this, you know, in this time, to add this, this amount is, would be tough, you know, that's why I want to present this to the board. When we had the high school renovation committee, at that time, the economy, you know, we talked about opening it up for community hours and doing this, you know, it was a little bit better at that time. But again, I wanted to present this to you and get your, get your feelings on it.
I have a question, just one, it's comments to the board, if anyone has any thoughts on what you just presented, I'd be interested in hearing. Just a thought, maybe the first option, which is pay, and whether it would, if it offered it, whether it would happen, if it wouldn't happen, it would be a cost. And we could judge from there how much food he has in his, or you could give him, see if, maybe give some idea of how, whether we want to invest $7,800 as a goal. You know, if it was booked up really quick and people wanted to do it, then maybe something you can consider. But I think that gross $7,800, that's something we're cutting, everything that we're cutting, sort of stayed in hopes that somebody may come and use it. Okay. Just a thought, a comment, a group mic, any ideas?
Thank you. The next presentation is about the academic intervention services program at all four buildings, and it's going to be presented by three of our principals, John Farrell, representing the elementary, Steve Malteschuk, the middle school, and Paul Farnwell, the high school. And again, this isn't any kind of in-depth explanation of AIS, we've actually done that kind of presentation before. It's really more about how students get placed, how many students can be serviced by a teacher doing the AIS, and the context of it is budgetary.
So we'll start, there are some differences in terms of what is mandated in the elementary, middle, and high school, some differences there in terms of how students get into AIS. So the first slide talks about the elementary and middle schools, and I think most people are familiar with the state assessments that we have in the areas of ELA, math, and science. And students that are in grades three through eight who receive either one or two on either of those three assessments would constitute us having to place them for academic intervention services. In addition, I'm sure Dr. Kirkwood's has spoken in the past some about our RTI process, and the, there are various assessments that are used in the RTI process so that if there is a child that would benefit or require additional services, they can go through that committee with the evidence of those assessments, and if that committee feels they need that intervention, they would receive it. Also, overall academic performance and teacher recommendations.
I'll jump in now. AIS placement at the high school, students in grades nine through 12 would be mandated for AIS if one of three things, they score below a three in ELA or math on the New York State Assessment, they score below the approved passing grade on any Regents exam, which is ELA, math, science, and social studies. This used to be the main reason for AIS placement, the, if they failed the test, they would then get the approved, the mandated AIS. Now changing, and if they're recommended through the RTI process. So we do have students that didn't make either of those, but if they're struggling, we try to find who are in their schedule for it.
AIS at Hagan and Nassau, frequency is based on need and availability and ranges from anywhere, could be two to five days a week, depending on the level of services that we feel that they need. Academic intervention services are primarily delivered through pull-out, that means just not from direct instruction. So the student, for example, is in AIS for math, he's not being pulled during math instruction for the AIS. Some services are delivered by pushing into the classroom. That's something that really depends on the needs of the students, particular class, and the needs of the teacher. AIS groups are typically not more than five students, that's very typical, and through the RTI process, students may be exited from AIS as a result of AIMS web assessments, DRA assessments, teacher recommendation, or, you know, there's a variety of other formal assessments that we look at.
So at the middle school and the high school level, when a student is designated as requiring AIS, that has to be an additional service, not instead of another service. In the middle school and the high school, those students receive those services on an every-other-day basis, and we have some contractual language that limits the class sizes to no more than 10 students in a class with an AIS provider. Once that exceeds 10, you would need a monitor, and if it exceeds 16, you'll also need a second teacher to provide that service. I'll talk a little bit more, a little bit later in the presentation, about the difficulties in terms of the scheduling. That's a challenge both at the middle school and at the high school, especially if students need to be either put in or taken out in the middle of the year. And then we'll also go over the numbers, and you'll see that there are more students that will require the service now that we've had changes in the cut scores.
This just gives you a snapshot of AIS currently, our numbers at Nassau for both ELA, math, and also science. Total numbers of students receiving ELA, AIS right now at Nassau, 65, and for math, 42, and for science, for those four are students that, you know, are the same students, also receiving services through ELA. This gives you another snapshot of pre and post-cut score changes in the numbers at Nassau, so prior to the cut score, oh, nine, 10, and then currently, a comparison with our numbers. That was for, the previous slide was for ELA, and this is for math, again, comparison, pre and post-cut scores, the numbers of AIS for math nights at Nassau. This chart shows the current number of students that are being serviced in AIS at Hagan for ELA, total number of 128, and for math, 67, and science, one student. And a, again, pre and post-cut score comparison for AIS at ELA at Hagan. And in math.
So on this slide, I also compare numbers, oh, nine, 10, prior to the cut point change, and then post. And you can see how much of an increase we're required to provide to students in terms of AIS services. Those numbers are going up even though in general, our class sizes are going down. And I have a graph to show the picture. I think it does a pretty good job. You know, the blue shows basically what we were servicing in terms of numbers prior to the cut score and the huge increase in the numbers of students that were required to service now that cut scores have changed.
The number of students at the high school, a little different, but you can see those numbers will be going up based on the last slide. At ELA, English, we have seven. Math, we have a total of 20, five in a traditional AIS setting, 15 in a class we have with a built-in AIS called Geometry with Lab. Social studies, six, science, two. Study skills, which they can get work on any subject, but also working on study skills, 33. And students' current performance is also monitored by our school counseling staff in case there's any need during the year.
So have we had to, because of the change in cut score, maybe have to add again staff?
We did not add staff as a result of the change in cut scores. Steve is actually going to be addressing it. It affects his building more than it has anywhere else, and he'll explain that in the next presentation, actually. But essentially, it's just the way they were serviced for, you know, pulling somebody from one section and giving them AIS instead of another section of the core English or Just as a reminder, the RTI, it wasn't defined up there. That stands for Response to Intervention, and it is a piece of federal legislation, the IDEA legislation. It's a prerequisite before any child can be referred to the Committee on Special Education. There are different tiers within the RTI process. It's essentially a committee of teachers, service providers, like guidance counselors, social workers, psychologists, building principals, who meet and discuss student performance, when there are concerns, look at test scores, and provide or diagnose remedies that they try, these interventions. And then if the interventions don't succeed, they come back to RTI for a second tier of intervention, something more significant. And ultimately, the process, if it's not effective in providing intervention to remedy the problem, may end up in the child being then referred to CSE. So it's not something where you can easily say if a student goes to RTI, it's automatically put into AIS, that's not the case. But RTI itself is mandated as a process for providing the interventions.
One question about the cut scores and the Common Core standards. Since we have so many changes, so we're teaching different, new content, and we're teaching differently, at the same time, we're, we're scoring the kids' tests differently. So do you, the principals and professors, do you expect that once we get over this hurdle and we finally get what we're supposed to be teaching the kids, are we going to get less AIS? Is that, do you think that's going to help, or we're testing two different things here?
That's a ask to be denied, as far as I'm concerned. You know, I do think that, you know, ultimately, we do need to do what we need to do to make sure that kids aren't in AIS forever. You know, that ship is kind of sailed. We have to make sure that the district has been providing the buildings with tools that they need to do a better job of monitoring the progress that kids are making on a very regular basis. And I think once we become more proficient in terms of our instruction and also our remediation, that we'll be taking the kids out of AIS, and kids hopefully will, fewer kids will replace them and get one.
To answer in another way, the commissioner believes, and I think is largely right, although it will take some time, I think, to get there, that if we teach the Common Core standards in the way that we are supposed to for a Common Core, which is a whole different paradigm, the idea is that no matter what test they're given, it's going to be a test that students should perform better on because we're teaching them to think, not to respond to test questions. But it is a huge shift in terms of what teachers are accustomed to and in terms of planning, it's a huge instructional shift. You know, Jill can give us another presentation later. You know, Jill can give us another presentation later in the spring to update you. She had done one earlier this year, but that was the fall, seems like forever ago. But you're right, there are a lot of changes, and it's hard to know right now how it's going to be impacted. You know, one of the biggest concerns we have are for high school students who have never been taught in the Common Core method. And in a couple of years, we'll be taking Common Core tests without having any kind of training in that kind of thinking or that kind of preparation. So, to be continued. Paul Canuelli and Steve Malphisher have another presentation. They have been asked to address the impact of proposed secondary cuts on their program. Steve specifically has a couple of positions targeted for next year, whereas Paul has already made some cuts to staffing and is looking in future years. So, there will be a little bit of a difference in their presentations. Steve will be a little more factual in terms of specific places that he's going to make the cuts because it's for next year, while Paul will be looking at it more philosophically in terms of explaining how he will go about making the decisions when the time comes, what kind of factors he looks at.
Okay, thank you. What Dr. Val just said is correct. I have looked at from a philosophical point of view, what looks like, what would happen when those cuts come to fruition. First slide, it's pretty simple. If we're gonna reduce the budget at the high school, some things are gonna have to happen. The reduction of the number of electives and an increase in class size, specifically everywhere, but specifically in core classes. For the electives, one thing I want to make clear about electives, electives aren't classes that are just there and kids just take because they like it. Electives are needed for students to reach to require twenty-two credits for graduation. You'll see a number of the electives we have, you know, but some could be cut, but we couldn't do without all of them because kids need them to reach the twenty-two. Considerations for eliminating electives, one would be enrollment. Next year, actually, our enrollment goes up. It's not really been the trend elsewhere in the district, but at the high school it will go up. There's currently one-hundred-and-forty-eight students in Mr. Malphisher's eighth grade, and at the high school, it's one-hundred-and-twenty-sixth in twelfth grade. So, we're gonna see a slight increase there. If you do the math, you know, it's about a section of kids. So, we're not increasing anything for next year, but we're gonna, something's gonna have to be considered to go in order to meet that demand. Course requests, one of the number-one things you look at when we do our schedule is what the students need and want. The need for quality graduation experience, looking to get a well-rounded individual, so we want to have electives that will expand the mind. AIS needs are gonna play a big role. Seen from Mr. Malphisher's presentation, AIS is gonna become a bigger player, and will eat up some sections. And cost, some electives, there's more of a cost to than others, so that is definitely will be considered when we're looking at which electives to run. Just to get a snapshot of the number of electives that are out there, I won't necessarily read these all to you, but we have the first number for art, nine. Of those nine, six are semester course, like a one and a two, depending upon what course it is, and three are full years. We have one business course, which is accounting. And you could look kind of down the line there, three computer, seven English, four foreign language, nine math, four music, nine science, and four social studies. For core classes, in order to reduce sections, I wanted to give a snapshot here of what the effect would be. A reduction of a section, depending upon how many are in there at the beginning, I looked at, it would probably reduce by, increase class size by four to ten students, depending upon what class it is. Give an example, this is current numbers. We have six sections of a class with one-hundred-and-thirty-five students, is about twenty-two and a half in that good number. If you reduce that one section, you're up to twenty-seven, just to kind of give you a sense of what would happen. Class size could limit offerings, specifically honors classes could be limited if you have thirty-five students in need of a certain class, you're then gonna be questioned. Once you get past that number thirty, you start to do, you run two sections. Do you limit it to just thirty students, which is the suggested size? These are places where we're gonna have to look at when we get to that point. Also, student IEP has an impact. Example, if you run integrated class, inclusion class, certain numbers have to be involved with that, a modified class. So, all these have to be considered when we're looking at what to eliminate. Physical education, physical education would be a place I would definitely look at. Current class size, about eighteen and a half, nineteen, but we have some really big classes, about twenty-seven. If you do the math, if you reduce a section, it would increase class size by one to two students, but some of the bigger section, we'd have to watch really how we schedule. But I think that could be a spot we would look at. For example, next year, we're actually gonna lose some sections of phys ed education because some of the staff will be used at the elementary level to help with the transition. My last slide before Mr. Malphisher takes over is just to talk a little about the scheduling process, what we currently do, and how I think it'll be impacted. Our current scheduling process is we look at student requests and teacher recommendations before making the master schedule. This process is very student-centered. In my other stops before here, you know, sometimes you see a schedule's already built, and then you try to take the student request and put it in it. We kind of do the opposite here, which I'm very proud of, is where we take the request and then build the schedule. It's a lot more difficult that way, you know, we really try to get the student what they want and what they need. I really think this would be impacted. The reduction of sections increases the number of scheduling conflicts, which would result in inability to be requests. I don't know exactly how much that would be impacted, but I know that as we start to eliminate sections, that would be something that would definitely occur. I'd like to pass the mic over to Mr. Malphisher.
Okay. So, I'm gonna start, again, these are my recommendations in terms of some cuts. Sixth grade would move from six teachers to five teachers. We currently have two teams. Both teams have, each team has three teachers. Each teacher teaches reading in ELA, and then one, another core, whether it be science, math, or social studies. This would, each teacher then, if we move to five, would teach one, one class, and all sixth-grade students would have each of those teachers. It would reduce one full-time educator. Class sizes would increase from where they are, about twenty to about twenty-four students. The concept of a core teacher currently, when students come from the elementary school to the middle school, there's one sixth-grade teacher that they have for three classes. We call that a core, so they would have them for ELA, the reading, and then one of the other core subjects. It's a loss of a teacher to provide a duty. On the flip side, each of those teachers would be responsible for one subject, and with all of the professional development that's going on, it would be less time that they would be required to be out in the classroom to receive that professional development. Foreign language, a cut to sixth-grade foreign language would reduce one full-time teacher. Sixth-grade foreign language is not a requirement. We're very lucky to have it. By no means is it something that I don't think highly of. I certainly do, but you'll see as we progress here why I'm making those recommendations. Students, this would allow, basically, students that are in sixth grade next year to be scheduled to receive the AIS services. And for students that don't require AIS, I'd maintain enough foreign language staff to provide them with enrichment in the area of foreign language. This is just a reminder of, you know, how things change in terms of the game with AIS and the number of students that we have to provide the service for. So, the challenges that I have, and Mr. Tremendo had said this before, that, you know, the state is imposing more requirements, but they really aren't taking anything away. And in the middle school schedule, almost everything that the students are receiving were mandated to receive. It causes some challenges in terms of the scheduling process when it comes to AIS. One is making sure that I can schedule the kids. If they're scheduled for every period of the day, again, AIS has to be in addition. I can't take another requirement away to provide AIS. And the picture for next year, you know, you saw the slides, you know, the pre and post, and what things are looking like currently in my school. But next year, thirty-three percent of the incoming sixth graders are required to receive AIS in addition to their full schedule. Eighteen percent of the sixth graders that are coming to me next year are special education students that have resource room that further complicates my ability to schedule them. And right now, you know, we've had presentations earlier in the school year that we were cited for not making AIP, specifically ELA for special education students. You know, and the second piece is, you know, the question was asked, have we added staff to, you know, to provide AIS services? And we haven't, but I would need to in order to be within what I'm required to do. So, I would ask to hire a full-time AIS literacy expert, and what follows is basically a gift to get. So, in order to be able to fund that, I'm proposing to cut one section of PE at Todd. It would increase class sizes from the current about fifteen to twenty-four, which is reasonable. Cut the section of studio and art. The reason that you've seen an increase there is the students that were in studio and art would go into the encore cycle that happens during the day. Again, studio and art currently is a morning class at seven o'clock that parents drive their students in for. So, that's two sections. One additional section of foreign language, and you can see how class sizes would increase in the different grade levels and in the different discipline, the different language. And then, two sections of music. Half a section would come from music appreciation, a reason it's a half a section is music appreciation is every other day, and half a section of music appreciation in eighth grade. So, one, six, one in eighth, and one section of music lessons. And that would equal the full-time literacy expert salary, if you will. Some questions?
Yeah, so as far as the, how will the teachers be chosen for who's teaching what subject in sixth grade?
I mean, and I did. We went that direction. I had a plan in mind.
I mean, I like your thinking, so back to the, how you're managing AIS with foreign language. What about, like, orchestra, orchestra band? I mean, I know some students would take both. I mean, they could be in AIS and still do that as it is right now?
There are music requirements now. If a student has the ability to do a second music, obviously, we would schedule that for them. But the AIS would have to take precedence over the unmandated or, because a student would wanna take some more music.
Can you explain a little bit more how you're gonna do the cuts in studio and art? I thought there was only one section. How are we?
There is one section. The studio and art is, you know, if you have a teacher, teaches five classes, one of those classes is studio and art that happens to take place at seven o'clock in the morning. So, what I have to do is I have to come up with, if I want to hire a full-time literacy person, then I would have to cut what would equal five sections. So, that's where the art came in, the foreign language came in, and the music pieces.
And you would be teaching, maybe it would no longer be teaching studio and art?
That's correct. Again, it's not a reflection on what I value. It's a reflection on, you know, part of my job as the middle school principal is to make sure that the program that we're offering falls within the guidelines and what I'm mandated to do. You know, I love the idea of having a sixth-grade foreign language. I think it provides our kids with a nice head start. They do very well in foreign language. You see the results every year. But it's something that isn't required, AIS is. Studio and art is a nice opportunity for kids that are interested in the arts to take a high school-level class and get a credit, you know, in middle school before they go up to the high school. But again, it's not mandated, AIS is. And this, I spent a lot of time thinking about this and talking to a lot of people, and tried to hurt students as little as possible, honestly. You know, again, it's not something that I'm happy to do, but at the same time, it provides me with the opportunity to be within the mandates that I have to follow.
Sixth grade, moving to having no more teacher. We always pride ourselves that our kids have no problem moving from, you know, transitioning from the elementary levels to the middle school. Is that part of it because they have a core teacher? Do you think that's gonna change the adjustment? Or you think the way you're proposing is still gonna make a difference?
I put it up there because I do see it as a benefit. But I do want to also remind the board that even before I came, homerooms were established in which, wherever possible, keep students for the three years with the same homeroom teacher, so that they do have, you know, somebody, a mentor. And also, we're a relatively small school. I would hope that our kids feel that there's somebody there for everybody, whether it be a guidance counselor, a favorite teacher, you know, myself. But yeah, I mean, there, I saw it as a benefit, that's why I put it up there as a consequence. You know, it is a nice piece of the transition, but there are other ways that we can, that we can make up for that. And you see that the class sizes really aren't, you know, too, these times, you know, the class sizes really aren't too big with that reduction. And it's also nice that teachers now can really focus, especially with this shift to the Common Core, they can focus on one subject area and become an expert in that area. So, there's a benefit, you know, there are benefits.
What, the cost, you mentioned, I'm looking at the cost of that consensus, studio and art, and that, wait.
Essentially, point two is approximately seventeen thousand dollars. The next two and last two presentations are going to be done by Jill Burwood's, the first of which is going to be about the summer academy, something that was recommended to eliminate for next year. And the second is about the technology department and the roles and responsibilities of the people who work at it. The summer academy started at the same time that academic intervention started. It came from a ruling by the commissioner in the middle of a school year that said that we were required to have academic intervention. And so, we initiated our initial AIS program at the same time, thinking that we needed to be able to offer a summer program to augment the work during the school year. These parameters have remained the same. The length of the program has always been three weeks. The length of the day of the students in the program is two hours. Parents transport the students. Diagnostic and prescriptive remediation is the focus of it. So, the beginning is a time when teachers are testing the students to see exactly what skills they need to work on. The second week essentially is the week that they work on those skills, and the third week, they assess the student's progress. K eight, using last year's numbers, because I wanted to use the most recent post-cut score numbers, but this is very exemplary of what's happened in the past. It's between three hundred and four hundred and fifty students are invited into the program. It's between 300 and 450 students are invited into the program and approximately 120 to 140 say they'll come. So last year specifically, Hagan invited 112 and 54 accepted. Nassau invited 87 and 22 accepted. Todd invited 239 and 69 accepted. In order to staff the program of those people who accepted, we had to hire 14 teachers and a teaching assistant. Again, 438 were invited and at the second round of camp, it was 145 agreed to attend. Why does that look like that? The average daily attendance, however, changes from the number of students who accepted. So I wish I could see the bottom of that slide. Okay, go back. Pre, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. All right, so starting at the left, the attendance for the pre one was about 65%. For pre two was about 75%. Pre three was about 55%. Pre four was under 70%. Pre five was about 60%. Pre six was below 60%. Pre seven was almost 80%. And pre eight was between about 65%. When a student was absent, the nurse who happened to be on the premises because of the special education program, we didn't need a nurse for this program, but the nurse would call home. So there were other people in the building at the time that also kind of were there so that they were able to contribute to the program. So the nurse would call home. The cost of the program last summer was $31,814 for 16 teachers and one administrator. This past summer, Mrs. Brady was the administrator in charge and worked very hard to get some answers about the attendance. Once we hire the teachers, the program is set. So we have no way of knowing if we're gonna have 100% on Tuesday or on Thursday. So once we have the commitment from parents, we do hire the teachers and focus the administrator on that. It's a great deal of work that goes on in the buildings in the springtime after we get the results of the state assessments so that we can identify anybody that's newly identified or who seems to be suddenly at risk and make sure that those invitations go out. The invitations go out from the principal of the three buildings and are managed, the answers are managed then by the administrator who covers the program. Last summer was Mrs. Brady.
When they agree to attend, are they just sending in a sheet that they want on a 10?
The first thing that they do is say that they're number of 10. Then from what I understand, the principals were their designate, then have a conversation with the parents, speak with them about the parameters, the times to arrive, and so on. In that letter and in that conversation, they're told about the importance of the attendance because two weeks and two hours a day is not a whole lot.
This is just a thought. I mean, is there any way to legally, you know, just have a deposit? I mean, you know, not that you're paying, but you, you know, put something in to be out X amount. You get it, you get it back. I mean, is there?
I have to check.
No, I know, I know. Something that would give us more accurate numbers.
Jill, so this initiated one manual of the A I S, but is it, is it a fact mandatory measure?
Do we have any statistics or can we get them without too much work to correspond the future success, many students that attended versus the future success that those that were identified that chose not to attend? In order to do the day, does it statistically show that there is improvement gained by working this program?
To the children who attend.
To the children that attend.
To the children that attend, we have never had a child come out of the summer program and test out of the academic intervention program in a school year. So that those children may be constant academic intervention students. Looking backwards, looking forwards with all of the work that we have been required to do and we've been leaders in the R T I process and the academic intervention process. So as the academic intervention methodology changes and we're using tools like aims web to monitor and test and progress monitor their specific skill development, we have a better chance of seeing children come out of A I S like Mr. Mackish spoke about. But we did do a study a couple of years ago to see, it's, in three weeks, can't possibly get somebody, you know, in and out of the skill. Then there's the break. The true break about regression is two weeks. So the whole business of being worried about the summer is statistically as powerful as being two weeks out of school. So in order to consider those children being remediated, there's a better chance of them being remediated in their, in our winter program than in our summer program, which doesn't take away from the fact that there are other side advantages. The children that wind up coming do have certain experiences. It's interesting that the middle school students did have a better, you know, attendance rate. The little kids who do come have an affinity for the school, have a comfort level for the school. It definitely helps with their transition into sixth grade. I mean, it's like being in a department store when it's closed. Well, actually, I do not so as to talk to them. But you know what I mean? Because I, my first job was in a department store and there was something comfortable and fun about being in the store when it was closed. So you'll see when you come in summer, no matter who's in the building, those kids have a comfort level that ultimately helps them moving forward.
So in short terms, it did help all the children that's gonna do?
In what we measure, in what got them in and what gets them out.
Right. What I'm asking is?
Is the academic?
In the past that has not been over, is that how I understand it?
Not the summer program.
Right, so what I'm asking is, in summer patch, is it helpful or is it not?
Is it helpful to remediate a child's, let's say, reading or math problem? We haven't seen, and I'll, I can, you know, do an analysis for you. I, we haven't seen connecting a child to that program and seeing them not need academic intervention services in September or, let's say, going from a one to a three, you know, using state, state testing.
Basically, what I'm trying to get is, we have a lot of tough decisions on where, you know, what we need to do and what we have to do. And if this isn't as successful, is there another place where we can take this $31,000 and put it, it will be successful and the students will advance? That's, you know, that's what I'm asking, not to be rude or anything, just where we at?
That's the point, I think. In 2006, we changed the, the way the technology department was organized. And we became more of a team between the education side and the, what we're gonna call the technology side. At, in 2006, when we started to look at that, we had five servers, six wire, in the district, six wireless access points, 12 laptops, four smart boards, and 800 desktops. This year, we have 22 servers, 113 access points, 497 laptops, 95 smart boards, and a reduction of 723 desktops, which is partially offset by the laptops. This is a way of looking at those same numbers, the growth in the servers, wireless access points, smart boards, desktop computers, laptop computers. So of course, our service requests went up. We've been monitoring our service requests technologically since 2008, so we could go back to this with definiteness. There has been a spike to over 850 or just around 850 requests from down around 760. At that same time, our usage of B O C's people to come in and help us with our repairs or sending things out to B O C's has reduced from over 600 down to 300 this year. And we are planning on 800, I'm sorry, 80 next year. That's the hardware side. The information side in the business that we're in now has been extremely impacted by the governor and the commissioner. We have two systems that feed each other. The student management system, which you may be familiar with because that's part of, the portal comes out of the student management system. I have to get my tea tea. The student information repository system is something that the state requires. The state concerned with the feds. So all of the information that we're required to keep locally has to feed into that repository. The student information system handles our scheduling, things like our grade point average. We have to internally ensure that our data is accurate because at this point, all of our data goes out to state ed. We have to create custom reporting, both for internal use and we have to sometimes create reports for external use. We have to be trained in what our students